I'm going to bring the City Council for the City of Dunsmere's order at 6:11 PM. We apologize for the lateness today. I hung up at a other event, but we will now stand. By the way, roll call and flag salute are switched on this agenda.
Oh, that's interesting.
I just noticed that. But we will now stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move into roll call.
Here.
Captain Brian.
Present.
Here. May I have a say? Present. Thank you. We'll now move to...
Well, we should. Thank you, Captain, for Big Dave.
Yes, so Big Dave is an excuse absence. He had surgery on his ankle, I believe. So he'll be out for a week or two in the next. Going down the list, I think this was an older agenda.
I've been thinking that's one of them.
Yeah, cool.
I'm not sure if that's going right, sorry.
All right, no, it's all good. So we'll move to approval of the minutes.
Well, so on the older agenda, it is also missing the future agenda items on the second page. I would ask that that be added. And sort of to start on item 12A, I do think that Finance Committee recommendations should have been part of the public notice. In other words, if we try to improve the transparency in what goes on in Finance Committee. Thank you, Karen.
So since this is an older agenda, I have filled in the future agenda items and we are not, the committee reports come later. So just for everybody's education, we'll do the approval of the minutes and then move into our presentation, since we should have any issues with the minutes. And then we will move into general public comment. So we'll now move into approval of the minutes for the November 7, 2019 minutes. Is there any discussion or edits on the minutes?
Happy to move them.
All right, there's a motion to move the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second and a discussion. Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of approving the November 7, 2019 minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes carry. We'll now move on to presentations, and tonight we have a Siskiyou Economic Development Council update.
My name is Cory Deaton from the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. I'm the Communications Manager. I have room today, Heather Dawes as well, who will be speaking in a moment about the Discover Siskiyou aspect of our work. I believe we have five minutes, so I will be terribly brief, if that's okay. The first thing that's coming out to you is our 2018 annual report and our quarterly newsletter. It's something that you can look through and take home to get a great feel for our work. In March, we will be here with our 2019 annual report. It's just one method that we use to share, to communicate our work, for investment. We are the location for the Small Business Development Center. Currently, we're working with 77 clients. We've logged 500 and six consultant hours, assisted with six new business starts, and $1 million in capital. Please continue to access and utilize these services for small businesses in your community. Brownfields offers assessment for cleanup projects, either for potential continuation locations or locations that need help for sale or purchase. On the back of your quarterly newsletter is a way to propose locations for Brownfields cleanup. Lastly, before I turn the mic over to Heather for Discover Siskiyou, is resiliency. This is a program I oversee in 20 leaders from across Siskiyou County, from every town and city. Meet once a month to discuss resiliency strategies and put projects into effect to support our business climate throughout Siskiyou County. I encourage you to reach out to our office anytime, as we're an extension of your economic services in Siskiyou County, and I'm going to kick it to Heather.
Thank you. All right, I'll keep mine pretty brief, too. The biggest news I have to report from Discover Siskiyou is that as of November 1, we are officially renewed for a 10-year term, which is very exciting. Our initial term was five years, so we spent the last probably six months going through the renewal process that looked like getting a majority of lodging property owners in the county to sign a petition in support of the district, and then that ultimately went before the Board of Supervisors at their meeting in October. There was a 30-day public comment period where people could register complaints, and we didn't have any, which was really great. And we had some really fantastic support from Dunsmere Lodging Properties, specifically Louis Dewey at Cave Springs, and then Mark and Suzanne Lilly from Railroad Park. So that was really cool. We're really excited. We've been in the market for about two years, and so we're super excited about what we can do in the next 10 years. Kind of been building traction, and I think there are really good things to come. So pretty much all I've got tonight. If you have any questions for Cory or Karen.
Any questions from council?
I just want to welcome Cory.
Thank you. I'm new, so I appreciate that, Bruce. Thank you.
Well, I guess, a comment and a question. The comment is, I served with the Vice Mayor on our Finance Committee, and as you may or may not know, the general fund for the City of Dunsmere is in deficit this fiscal year. It's likely to be in deficit next fiscal year. We're looking at a combination of expenditure reductions, including the organization, and we're looking at revenue enhancements, both our sales tax and our occupancy tax. And I notice on your Board of Directors, you have Tim Marshall and Louis Dewey. I just hope we continue the conversation with our new City Manager about how Dunsmere and City Council can confidently say this was a good investment. You're doing Brownfields development. I see Wyreka, I see Mead, I don't see Dunsmere. So later on in the agenda, we're going to be talking about state grants, and I hope we can all work together so the tide raises all things.
Any other questions, members? I have no, thank you very much. All right, we'll now move into general public comment. This is the time in our agenda where members of the public may come up to address an item in the City of Dunsmere that is not on the agenda or is on the consent agenda. So for tonight, just a quick overview on our consent agenda. We have a resolution authorizing an application for the SB 2 planning grant funding. Our check register, our resolution doesn't need a representative in executing the Irwin Grant, and then cancellation of our December 5, 2019 meeting. If you'd like to comment on any of those or something not on the agenda item, this is your time, and you will have three minutes and then just your question may be.
David Pickes. Leading Counsel and City Manager and Finance Manager. I'm constrained by the rule about not talking about things on the agenda, but everything, since you're talking about budget stuff, is related to the agenda, at least indirectly. So I hope you won't consider this directly on point with the agenda. I read in the newspaper about the women in Mead by the Denver News on Wednesday, and not only the women in Mead was pelted round by two loose pit bulls, torn up pretty bad, her dog torn up pretty badly, and the owner came in and lost his anti-youth measure bid. But his excuse was, "I wasn't home, and the dogs were." That caused me to think that this is an opportunity to raise some money for the city through animal licensing ordinance. So I've spoken with two council members and one city staff member about the idea of maybe an amendment to the dog licensing ordinance, it might help one little step forward. And so unfortunately, my clients all decided today was the day that everything had to be done by everybody else. It was a crazy day for our lives. So I'm just going to say that it's my intention to take the current ordinance and propose some changes to it, and as soon as I can get them done, I'll deliver them over to City Hall for consideration by the City Manager and by council members. I hope you look favorably on it. Nothing I write is like stone or political, but it's just an idea to helping us monitor and pay for the community aid on Officer or Attorney President offices. So that will be coming as soon as I can finish. I hope to drop it off tonight. Generally speaking about what you're going to be doing tonight, I had this thought I wanted to share with you. It's just very few words, like six words, but well, eight words. Let us surprise ourselves by showing what is possible. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other general... Seeing none, we'll move on to general public comment and into council and staff comments of the City Manager, U-Hawson.
So on December 11, right now, we're tightening up the vacant building ordinance, so it has a little more teeth, and we will be bringing it to the Planning Commission on December 11, and we'll get comments from them before this bottom of the table. Again, we'll be here.
Good evening. Just to report on the October statistics, we had a total of 550 hours patrol, 149 calls for service. We took 25 cases, had 31 traffic stops, 14 citations, five arrests, which resulted in one felony booking and five misdemeanor bookings. One was a felony parole violation on Rose Avenue. We had misdemeanor driving on suspended license and two misdemeanor warrants on cheer. Misdemeanor minor possession of marijuana on Sacramento. Possession of drug paraphernalia on Shasta Avenue, and another driving on suspended license on Rose. Kind of the big, I don't know if everybody has seen the sheriff's press release, but the cornerstone burglary on the 14th got burglarized, and we have made an arrest on that. Deputy Ortiz was the investigator on it. We identified a suspect who's currently in custody and will be charged with burglary through one of our local businesses. So if you see Deputy Ortiz, I'm sure he'd like to hear about it, but he's just another one of our great deputies down here. Did a really good job on this case.
Question if I could? What about the burglary?
That one, we're still looking at. We're looking to see if we can make a connection between this suspect and that one. Currently assigned the investigating officer on that burglary to catch based Deputy Ortiz and see if we recovered some property and some footage, and so we're trying to tie it together.
Thank you.
But yeah, there's that one's underway to see if we can make that link. We did have one assault and battery on Edom and three vandalisms, one on Gray, one on Sacramento, one on Cave, and we had four penny thefts throughout the city.
Right, any other questions?
Well, for small businesses, especially in the downtown core, based on what you heard about the burglaries, are there things they could be doing to be smarter?
One of the things that we are seeing both in commercial and residential burglaries is that it's becoming commonplace for people to have cameras, and so the would-be burglars are going into these establishments or residences and keeping in mind that they will usually spend time casing the business or the residents first, and one of the things they're looking for is cameras. And so on the past, we had two burglaries this month. One was the cornerstone, and one was just outside of city limits. They went right for the cameras and went them off. So my suggestion would be for business owners and residents that are going to put cameras up, which we always starting to suggest, try to put them up in a way that is more discreet, not as visible, and if you can possibly get them to where they're out of reach, then put them where they're out of reach. But we're seeing a lot of stolen cameras now.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move into council comments. Council Verdoich.
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, Big Dave. I'll be reporting on Big Dave. A week ago, yesterday, I drove Dave and Karen down to Mercy Hospital. Broke down there 4 o'clock in the morning, and he got prepped, and he had his left ankle replaced. So he's got his right shoulder replaced and his left ankle. I'm not sure now that will affect how he walks, but in any case, he made it through, and the pain blockers that he had for that ended up quitting before the real, you know, before he thought. And so he was, I guess, the second and third day, he was in extreme pain, as you might imagine, when he's coming out of it. So I think he'll be fine going down the line. And the only thing I want to point out above and beyond that is that on Sunday, the Rotary is putting on a Global Thanksgiving, and that's free for everybody. It goes on from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock, and the one thing we ask everybody to do is to bring a potluck dish to pass around. So it's really a sense of community and a sense of coming together and celebrating. We made it through another year without any fires, if nothing else. So I hope you see everybody there and enjoy the spirit.
And where is that located, Bruce?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's at the Community Center, the New Building. 3 to 5 Sunday, Global Thanksgiving. This is, I think this has been going on for like 20 years, if I remember correctly. So it's a tradition, and if you're new to the area, come on and belong and enjoy it with the rest of us. Thank you, ma'am.
Paulson Gray?
Yes. The Finance Committee met for, I think, over two and a half hours and had a really robust discussion about possibilities that were against that anyway, that's the main direction. I'd say I should encourage everyone to prepare your plumbing for these colder nights. It's getting significantly cooler, and we're due for snow Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of next week, so everyone, prepare.
All right, thank you. Council Verdoich.
I was privileged to be part of Read Across Siskiyou earlier this month. I got to read the book of the year to a number of charming preschoolers at Dunsmere Elementary School, and it was immensely rewarding. It reinforces how lucky we are to be in this community with a functional school system. I am happy with leaving the grant proposal for the Mossbury intake on consent, but it is a very significant issue for our community. So I'm sure all of us will vote yes to pursue the grant to redo the intake system at Mossbury Falls, but I do think we should have a briefing from face engineering and staff on what this means for the community. We're spending quite a bit of money from our water rate beers to make this happen, and to me, it's of critical importance to the community. One of the grants that the integrated group is supporting, if the lady knows all this, is a companion grant from one of the nonprofits, California Trout, to do a general assessment of water quality in our region. And I'm hoping the city can work with this grantee on, they've already identified wells within our jurisdiction, and obviously, we can work cooperatively to assure that we have the best water on earth. Funded by the State of California, that's something we should be trying to do in the months ahead. The only other item is, I appreciate that Tim Holt sat through a very lengthy Finance Committee hearing. It's a Brown Act committee designed to encourage citizen participation, and in fact, Tim had to sit for an hour and a half and eventually left without saying anything, but he was kind enough to share with the community that he had had a chance to speak his citizen input on a number of cuts and revenue enhancements that we were considering. So as we move forward with the notion of democracy in action, I apologize to Tim. We're a work in process. Len Foreman is sitting behind you. He endured the whole thing as well. We are trying, but we have a way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any committee reports?
I do have one. I talked with Sergeant Westine, and we've decided we're going to go into hiatus with the Neighborhood Watch program. We have been having problems getting traction at the approach we've been taking, having a meeting once a month, getting people to come down here, et cetera. So what we're planning on doing is piggybacking the Neighborhood Watch initiative off of what I've mentioned before, which is the Build of Dunsmere's Future, a community building event that we're hoping to have in April. And the game plan hopefully will be that out of that event, we'll end up with a deeper sense of community and opportunity for the people who are there to be able to connect up and understand how we, and work together to build a sense of community. I know that the work I've been doing with the revitalization network and having just gone up to a community building summit, I know this is a real challenge. We only have, understanding about 40% of our homes are people who live there. The rest of them, 60% of the homes that are out there that normally would be part of the thriving community are part of the rental business right now, the second home business. So that means that we and communities all around us, it's not just Dunsmere, it's probably every small community around us struggling the same way. And so I'm hoping that with this event and actually piggybacking off the event that went on in Edna, which Cory was part of there, we're going to try and tap into her wisdom and put on a really good event in April. I hope a lot of people show up for that, but for the time being, I don't think we're making much progress coming in once a week and then once a month and having six or seven people show up. So with that in mind, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. And I know the Finance Committee met, and we have a lot of those recommendations that will be here tonight, but is there anything else you'd like to add?
No.
All right, we'll now move into consent agenda. The consent agenda is a series of items that typically the council members vote about today. Tonight, we are discussing Resolution 2019 dash...
Oh, 26.
26, authorizing the application for a CUB SB 2 planning grant program funds. Item B, check register for November 2 through November 15 of 2019. Item C is Resolution 2019-27, designating a representative to submit a proposal and execute an agreement for a Round 1 Irwin Grant. Item D is cancellation of the December 5, 2019 City Council meeting due to the City Manager's absence. Just a quick question on D. Are we going to plan on doing a special meeting or just having the one meeting in December?
My assumption was that we would continue with the December 19 meeting as scheduled. If you guys want to have a meeting before, we could do that, but I don't see anything coming down the pipe that couldn't wait a week.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, any questions on the consent agenda?
Can we adopt consent agenda?
There's a motion to adopt consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Motion by Council Verdoich, second by Brian. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items A, B, C, and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Extension. Motion carries. Move into item 11, which is no public hearings. So we'll move into old business, beginning with review and discussion and possible action regarding Finance Committee recommendations. We'll hand it over to Finance Committee and City Staff.
Yeah, so Finance Committee met, staff report just lays out that we met on the 13th, so the minutes, which are included in the packet, have not yet been approved by the Finance Committee, so we haven't had a second meeting to approve prior minutes, but we are just providing them here, just caveat that it hasn't been approved by the Finance Committee yet. All right, but they did have some recommendations to come to the City Council. So that's what we're at with that. So if you do turn to the minutes, the bullet points are clearly labeled there. So these were unanimously approved by Finance Committee to be recommended toward you.
Could you read those just for members of the public who may not have this in front of them?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
So there are three, four, five bullet points that the Finance Committee was recommending. First one, to halt payments to the airport consultant. The next one is limit education spending to state mandated, basically required education for this year and next. Provide a path forward regarding the city park within the next three months. Place a $55,000 cap on community promotional funding for next year. And then finally, reach out to community and investigate a TOT increase. TOT is transient occupancy tax. So those were the recommendations from the Finance Committee. In the packet itself, I do have a parenthetical on some of these that give a cost breakdown of them. I didn't say that in this talk right now, but it is there. So I guess that's the bullet point sections from the Finance Committee. So then what we have done further, and there are copies at the front, but we do have kind of a listing sheet, some more graphs, or the same graphs from the last City Council meeting, and then also some revenues, pie charts, revenue graphs, that were brought at Finance Committee meeting. So we do have those. If you want to grab them, there's a couple copies up there. The top cover, I was, I should note, it does at the top say Finance Committee recommendations, but some of the things on there are not necessary, they were not, you know, it's not the same as the minutes from the Finance Committee that were most recently happened.
Well, there's just a couple things that weren't accurate to Finance Committee's recommendations, namely the halftime code enforcement officer was not recommended by the Finance Committee at all. The key budget as is, retaining 18% reserve was not at all the intention. It was key community promotion funding, same this year. It was to terminate, for the time being, our relationship with Carroll Ford, and starting December, we could take advantage of that, so we'd be able to receive seven months, $800 each, this year. Education, we calculated to be somewhere around $5,000 this year, we could save if we started it immediately. So there's the main differences, but other than that, just stick to the spirit of it, we're very intrigued by the thought of being able to raise the TOT enough to help us get through to the point where we can put the tax minimum for people in the...
That was a nice account there, if you could hear how to...
So yeah, so just make that distinction. So the piece of paper that has all the colors on it, that is not, was not in the actual agenda packet, but is available, is not verbatim what the Finance Committee is recommending from the prior meeting. But it was, you know, all these things were discussed at some point, and does have some, you know, backing to them in some regard, but it's all just been discussed.
Can we perhaps produce a corrected version available to public council in the near future? These numbers are important. It's just a few little things that aren't, it affects the overall numbers for government. Now, we're trying to get to what reserves we'll have at the end of two, one and a half years. That's the particular question for us right now.
So, and there's always ways to, these numbers are correct in the sense that they are correct right now, but we can always say that we're going to go half a year, so then this would be a half number. So instead of 9,600, it'd be 4,800. So easily able to change this document around? Yes, of course.
Yeah, so the Finance Committee's general proposition was, we're at 91,000 this year in deficit. Clearly, it's not going to be the exact same, but then if we continue our basic habits, it'll be at least $91,000 next year. So we have a total deficit in those two years before we can go to collect from the new sales tax, if it's adopted by the citizens of Dunsmere. We have, you know, $182,000 to make up the difference, and that brings us down to almost a 10% reserve, so we're trying to maintain a 15 or higher percent reserve through more and raising revenues, perhaps the TOT, but also through these little cutting measures. We even discussed at some line, perhaps not being able to afford the Siskiyou County Economic Development Council, $6,000, but on a one-year basis, totally can get through to save the waste.
May I ask a question?
Do you have any...
Aren't I thinking we were more like discussion, we're more happy to go through this all right now, but that might be more in the discussion part or the after we do open comment?
Yeah, if you'd like to ask some questions.
Question. So with regards to the Carroll Ford Airport, the, I understand that this year, because we didn't have a grant, that we can't charge for money to the grant, the one thing I'm concerned about...
The one thing I'm concerned about is that we want to make sure that whenever we need to bring her onboard, to be in line for next year's grant, that we have the ability to do that. So, you know, over a month, this, this might end up being, if we take this up, and I'd like to make sure that we can do that. Is that reasonable?
Yes, we, we spent about a half hour on the phone with her today. We restarted some of the conversations, and it gets into a lot of detail. But using some of the tailings from, you know, the airport and that match, and what we're running into is the same thing with the FAA, where we keep resubmitting stuff, and they say that they never received it. So now, the person that we're dealing with at FAA, at FAA, has somebody that's shadowing him because apparently he's, um, job, he's very challenged. And so we have someone monitoring him, and every email's being copied to the, um, the West Coast FAA director. And she's looking out for us, and, um, yes, we can pick it up.
So it wouldn't necessarily be a terminate, or termination contract, but a suspension until?
We can pick it up or we lock it up.
I'm just worried about terminating and if that has any monetary factor with terminating the contract or anything like that, but suspension sounds better than terminating it.
Yeah.
No, it, it doesn't. It, it has positive impacts in that if we were to award a grant this year, we don't have to cough up the match.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Councilman Deutsch, any other questions right now? Councilman Deutsch? Councilman, are there any questions before we go to public comment?
Well, just procedurally, thinking for Tim, how are we going to dispose of what I take as fiber combinations before this is done? Are we going to do it one by one, are we going to do it in line for the public? What are they commenting on?
They would be commenting on it right now.
And then what are we going to do?
And then once public comment is over, we would move into discussion.
Our, our wrestling, I think is probably the best way to look at it.
So basically, procedurally, everything is on the table that's been presented. If someone has an additional new item they want to bring up, they can bring that up in general public comment. But once public comment is closed, we will then go into discussion. We don't have to act tonight, but I believe there is, you know, there might be a request to act on some things. We may take some time on other items that are more contentious. If you want to discuss that later and recommend, you know, going out and asking a little bit more information about some of these. I think it would be nice if we would be able to move on some of these items, but if there is one that in particular, you think, or you've been told by the general public is a little bit more contentious, you know, we don't have to vote on all of these today. I think what we've talked about in the past is that this isn't going to be something that's going to be solved by one action item. Raising TOT and TUT is not going to save the city. It's going to be a series of large and small cuts, revenue generation, cost savings. And so the conversation isn't finished tonight. But if there are some that, you know, again, that we all mutually agree upon, you know, we can act on those. So again, if there's an item that you're particularly concerned about, you can bring that up in discussion and maybe, you know, say we need a little bit more time, we need to go out to the general public before we do it. So we are going to open up the public comment once for this item, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're done with the conversation.
I, I guess, just to share before the public comments, the issue of the forests of the trees. And we now have two public members on Finance Committee. One of them has managed budgets much bigger than the city of Dunsmere. And Citizen Foreman asked a lot of very good questions in preparation for our Finance Committee meeting. What I hope is, the treasurer's not here tonight, but if the treasurer was here, he would say, be careful with your spending, Dunsmere. And he would also say, this is a picture that consists of revenue and expenses. And Finance Committee has put on the table for all of us to decide, an increase in the sales tax, an increase in the lodging tax, a projection of cannabis revenue, a projection. But so far, the stat seems really closely aligned with current budget. The year's half over, we're not spending enough time.
So here again, we're getting more into discussion. We're really just supposed to be asking clarifications at this point, and then getting to public comment. So if you could wrap it up earlier.
I just want the public to understand what we're trying to do on their behalf.
But that's very discussion, sir. That's, that's what the discussion is.
Well, I'm letting him finish his thought. So again, we have a lot of time to discuss, we have an appropriate time for that, but I want to be able to get the public some.
Sure, boy.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now open this up for a public comment on the item. So again, we're only going to have a public comment related to this item as a whole. You know, so again, if you need any more information about the items, I believe Julie has a couple of, do you have any more copies, no more copies? Okay, you can have my copy if you really need one. So if you'd like to come up and make a comment on the Finance Committee recommendations related to raising revenue and cutting costs that were here tonight, or if you have any other ideas that you'd like to offer similar to generating revenue or cutting costs or cost recovery, that's open as well. So you will have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to comment. And it was a little frustrating at the Finance Committee meeting, because we had been asked to, you know, brainstorm with the, you know, citizen brainstorming, and I was ready to brainstorm a little, but I couldn't wait more than an hour and a half. So it was a little frustrating, I'll be honest about that. So here I am. Really, I don't have a whole lot to say. I'm not clear what the bullet item, where it says path forward regarding city park in next three months. That's very ambiguous. I have no idea what it means, but if it moves moving the children's park, if that's what you're trying to say there, I do not think it's a good idea. I think, you know, clearly, the children's park is one of the assets who are beyond time in the area. It's used by residents and tourists alike. And I also, of course, don't think it's a great idea to cut community funding. You're going to save about $20,000 from what you spent last year. Because I think it was, or what you're spending this year, which is $75,000, I think. And 55, and again, you know, Councilman Deutsch was talking about building community and so forth. Well, you know, these organizations like the library, the swimming pool, the resource center, the chamber, the citizen of the year dinner, all those things build community. And those are, I think, you know, very important. So what I do like, though, is the idea of enhancing revenue. And I'm very glad to see you do have, for your new business item, increasing the TOT, because if I understand that correctly, it could bring in $35,000 a year with a 2% increase in the tax. And if I'm also correct from your previous city council meeting, that would keep you at, with your, what, your reserves at about 20% of the budget, if I understand that correctly. And I think that was one of your goals, so you're, or at least very close to that. So again, I guess my basic message as an interested citizen is, you know, maybe look at, you know, enhancing revenue rather than shrinking services and some of the important things in our community. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come up and make a comment on the item? She, go for it.
Thank you for mentioning the consideration of the Siskiyou Economic Development MOU services tonight. Because we're here, so we have opportunity to provide comment. First, we do want to be very transparent about the return on your investment in our services. And so if we can provide that kind of information to show a one-to-one return or higher on what that investment does do in the community, we'd love the opportunity to do that and present that information. And when I think of some of those opportunities available, again, we want to help leverage funding for your community that helps you meet your goals for economic or community development. Sometimes there's some overlap there. And so I just wanted to provide comment and encourage you to make a specific request to us, either in meeting, or presentation, or communication with your schemater, so that we can provide enough information to demonstrate the return on that value. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close with a public comment and move into discussion. Councilman Hart, would you like to finish your thought, you have to form a public comment now, or?
Well, I, I thought it was unfortunate that this council has got back and forth on our values in terms of the budget. Do we support community funding? Do we not support community funding? Do we see a future where our economy is recovering and it can stand tax increases, or do we not? And we've spent hours and hours on this discussion in Finance Committee. And I again credit the Vice Mayor. If you look at the budget that the city of Dunsmere adopted, Randy Johnson's departing gesture, on page five, it says the following, "In adopting this budget, the city council also included the following goals and objectives for 2019-20." And number one is to investigate and pursue a new or increased transaction and use tax, no less than an additional 1%, sufficient to fund continued upcoming lawn enforcement costs, animal control, full-time code enforcement officer, continued community promotion funding, establish a proactive grant writing program, and in addition to the above, maintain a healthy general fund balance reserve. I hope we're all on that same page. I think the Finance Committee has done its best, the mayor fit out will lead that. Under the leadership of the Vice Mayor and the citizens of our group. So all I'm doing is trying to say, when we look at the trees, the city park, putting a cap on community fund promotion, I really would like to see what the next two to three years look like with the notion we've agreed on a 1% increase next November in the sales tax. Are we going back on that, or is that done? In Finance Committee, we think that's done. Are we going to cut the code enforcement officer to half-time? No interest in that, Finance Committee, we think that's done. Do you want to cut community funding? No interest in that, Finance Committee, we think that's done. So we sort of need to move forward together, looking at, Mario and I favor looking five years out. You all may favor two years out. But as these new revenue sources come on stream, I think the Chair and the Vice Chair are looking to prosperity rather than property.
Councilman Hart, would you like to?
I just like to participate in the discussion as it comes up, that, one, one final comment, which is that, you know, when I look at each one of these individually, it seems kind of almost arbitrary that we cut or add it to. But we were trying to achieve a goal of, in a year and a half, in November next year, a year from now, if the tax doesn't pass, we need to still be able to move forward as a city and not cut things so drastically that we create kind of a spiral of, you know, we spend a lot of time cutting services, more and more people don't move here or don't reinvest in our community or move away. The fear is, you know, we need to be ready for all scenarios in that case. So we're trying to put together just an equitable plan for getting us to the point where we'll be able to collect money on that, as far as we're concerned, the city council's direct staff put it on next November's ballot. And there's time to discuss that and make some alterations to it. But focusing on that, that, you know, an example would be the cap on community promotions funding. We were thinking about what would be like to, you know, run an organization that has difficulty with their finances, something that we've experienced with. And knowing what you have this year, having it taken away is very hurtful to your planning operations. But if you know in advance there's going to be some measure of shortfall, it's better, easier to plan and to weather that, so we perhaps have more funds to contribute. So that was the intention on that. And that's representative of our, the general Finance Committee. We didn't agree on everything, but there was actually unanimous consent on our members for all these recommendations.
For the, just a really quick question about the recommendations. So the $55,000 cap on community promotion funding for next fiscal year, how did you come up with that number?
We were trying to, we held it up till last, we didn't want to take it back. We went through everything we could cut reasonably for a year. You know, like, we don't want to never let the grants again in the airport. We certainly don't want to not be partners with the Secure County Development Council. Just in our current financial situation and uncertainty, you know, can we give up these things for a year? We thought that those are all kind of reasonable things to discuss. The 55 cap was simply, you know, a prudent financial policy probably would be to cut it this year, have the same cut next year. But, you know, people have planned their budgets, these organizations have. So the council, its wisdom has decided to maintain that level of funding for this year, and that stability. But we're not undermining the stability by having a measured slightly more than 25% cut. And it also brought our reserves with the TOT increase to a very reasonable amount to get through this impact.
So can I add a couple things to this? You know, really, what I took out of the Finance Committee is that we are trying to bridge until we do groundwork and attempt to pass a reasonable TUT tax, so we are solvent and we continue on as we have in the past. So things like this 11-acre parcel that we own, they're one-time, they're one-offs. We, you know, it's a, it's very rough, but we got some information back on that parcel that it's worth up to $100,000. I don't think it's worth $100,000, I think the best, we can get 50 for it. But it does help if we sell that kind of stuff. But I would also put in the, so on the building end of things, with the community service officer and all the backlog, all the issues with, you know, all the violations that have just gone on and uncorrected for a while. We really, you know, we really need a full-time CSO, at least for a while, to catch up on that backlog. And I would really like to find a way that we can keep Siskiyou Economic Development on board, if we can, in that they are really the only true economic development professionals up here. And I've been working with them quite a bit on a number of different issues. And I think that they do provide a lot of bait and bug.
Actually, that reminds me, could you maybe have a discussion and address the children's park item? I know we talked about it a little bit last meeting, but could you maybe give us some history on that and the options that we have based on that, that piece of property?
So, the, the folks that are leasing this property to us are looking to get that property back. And so they continue to increase the rent on that property. It's, it's something they, they want, they, you know, they wanted to put it to another years. So we're spending an awful lot of money to continue running that park, where we might be able to find an alternate location. And every year, there are funds available. You ask for them, you get them. The playground equipment out there right now is not updating the standard, so we need to replace it, but finding a place for it. You know, the suggestion was to call it out of the park, and someone brought up the idea that it's close to the river and agreed that's a, that's a safety hazard. It would have to be, it would have to be fenced. But I would argue that its location now is next to the main street coming to Dunsmere, so which it works. And is it worth keeping in that same location where we're just putting money down the drain for folks that don't even want us there, where we could get free money? And we've got to wait and continue to pay this rent up here until we find a location and we're sure that we can come up with the money to replace that equipment? We could do that, but right now, I think that's a money pit, and we can provide the same services if we're creative.
And there's no interest in buying, they would like to sell the property or develop it, do you know?
They would like to use it for purchase.
Okay. So that's for that. Okay, thank you. Councilman Deutsch?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. What I'd like to do real quick is just to, for the sake of putting things forward here, I'd like to run down and give a short summary of how I see each of the items. Having talked with the City Manager and finding out that he had been talking with Carol Ford, I'm comfortable with moving forward with the idea of temporarily suspending the payments there. I would not want to lose her. Mr. Yu Ha says, when he went to the conference down there, found out just how remarkably qualified she is and who lost her every day to the Treasury. So, as long as we can make sure we pick it up and we do, I'm fine with that. Thank you, Carol, for putting that up. I'm fine with the second item. I think now, ten you understand what the challenge is with regards to the park, and I think the three-month delay is to come up with some sort of a plan about how we approach it. And I do know that they have, and have had, this sum of money that's basically, you want money to make the park, here you go. So, it's a matter of looking at it, and I think that's what the three months are. So, the ultimate solution to that, I don't think is going to come in the near term, but that's the direction we're going, is to try and sort that all out. The one item, well, I'll drop down to TOT. TOT, I totally agree with that, that's something that goes out to people who are visiting and not to the local folks, which I support. The one item I don't support is the $55,000 cap, and I'll tell you why. If we're going to get the tax passed, it's going to be because we're going to be true to the people who voted for the last act because of the pool and the library. I understand, and I've said it before, that technically and legally speaking, we're not constrained to giving that money all to them, but the point is, is that if we were to look just at what we gave the pool and the library this year, we would basically have nothing else for anybody else. So, my thought is, is that we hold off on making any kind of a restriction on ourselves and just be cognizant of the fact that things may be changing for the future, and then try and make up for that with revenue increases. So, those are my thoughts, and if anyone else wants to rally around them, but I do contest the idea of a limit on the community development.
Well, to be clear, the council can choose to change its spending decisions at any time. Our recommendation was more to send a signal that stay minimum outfalls, we might have to make some cuts, and we're letting you know early that we're not trying to drastically cut it all the way back, which could be the case if things go wrong, we might be faced with that, but that we're going to maintain equitable levels of just a slightly over 25% decrease. So, the intention wasn't to cut back, but to project we will be spending some.
Could I quickly add, you know, my overall larger picture approach to how I like things of before is with, you know, so a three-pronged approach with getting the vacant building ordinance in place, so we can work as quickly as we can, it will take some time, we'll have any success in the lead with the same problem, property owner, to move some of these properties into other hands or force the property owner to do something. At the same time, as that's moving forward, with a community service officer being able to put out tickets for all these things that, you know, in the planning world, Jane Jacobs, the broken window effect, you know, you need to have a level playing field, and you need to make sure that you are, you know, taking care of the community to a point where people that are considering locating here do not think that this is a place that we don't care about because we are not enforcing code on the book. And the third prong is with SCED, and as soon as we can start moving some of these properties, especially some of the folks that are inhabiting these properties, and get them moving again, then we have an opportunity to work with our professional economic development folks in the county to then figure out what's next and who we get into these places.
I do have a quick question. What is it looking like for council travel and conferences? I know we already went to Long Beach this year, but that was another item that's been brought up that maybe next year we would probably, is that part of the limit of education spending? Okay, good. Okay. Because, yeah, it's been brought up to be that maybe, you know, in the future, if we are having some cutbacks, it might be better for council not to go to Long Beach and maybe do something regionally and writing that's a little bit more manageable, because that's a decent ticket item that we paid for this year. That, you know, if we're going to cut the library, I don't think it's very responsible that we're going to Long Beach for conferences.
Or, that was, that was also under the impression, we're given legal advice all summer long, we were allowed to place the tax on March 3rd, so we're very fast within the situation.
I would agree, yes. It's not, it's not a slap for this year, it's...
Well, no, but I do agree, that being a big reduction, but there's a lot of other little things we could do, and staff did assure the Finance Committee that that doesn't include cutting subscriptions to useful magazines that give us valuable resources.
I would, that's, that's great. That was one of my questions. So, Counselmember Grant.
With regards to the Economic Development Council, I think one of the strongest items in support of their work is the fact that we got the bottling plant, and the bottling plant in the condition that we did, and we couldn't have done that without them, they were integral in that process, working apart branding. Above and beyond that, I think that the amount that we spend on that, and actually the amount we spend, at least in part, on the chamber, is money that should really not be in community development, but a separate line item for economic development. We want to move towards that, so we're not titting them against the resource centers, but really what we're asking is, can we put some money inside for the future to develop our economy? And I'd like to look forward to doing that in the future, but I do want to make sure that we keep that authority, and especially if we're bad, we're not giving more, but whatever we can do.
Great, is there any other discussion? I'm fine with going for a 2% TOT increase, is there a general consensus on that?
Well, I have a separate item.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, there is a separate item for that.
Procedurally, I, on my Dunsborough Finance Committee meeting minutes, I have five bullets unanimously approved before the council, are we going to do these as a block, are we going to do it one by one?
It sounds as though we're all on the same page, we're all except for the $55,000 cap on community promotions funds. So, if you would like to make a motion to approve those, except for that one, and have that as a separate discussion item, we can do that.
Quick word as well, we tapped community investigation increase, we're effectively doing that already, it wasn't, the Finance Committee didn't have the community input necessary to gauge the effects of volatility, and we hope to invite everyone here to do a discussion and maybe decision later in the future.
Well, more specifically, the City Treasurer represented that the logic committee, community signaled me out several logic owners, including Louis Dewey, would be against this. So, we obviously need to have either the Finance Committee level or the council level a robust discussion. Louis Dewey supported, as a board member, us appropriating money to the Economic Development Council. Okay, that comes out of the general fund. So, we need to have this discussion.
Yep, and that's going to be our new business for tonight. So, we will continue to have this discussion.
My, my, my only concern with A dot one, city hall payments to airport consultant, is I'm totally unclear, is that for the fiscal year, is that for the fiscal year or next fiscal year?
Let's talk further, this is my understanding.
What is being presented to this?
So, the recommendation was starting December 1st, so that we take a minute to attend, we haven't reviewed the minutes yet.
And the, and the end of that suspension would occur when we get word that the FAA is playing with another grant that we could fund it with.
Well, we would certainly revisit it at that point.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
The recommendation was that, until we would be able to receive funding, but it's pretty much for seven months of this year and then all of next year's budget, which could be adjusted if we do increase the TUT.
Or if we do get a grant, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is all flexible, the council always has stability.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that aspect of it, as long as it's clear that what we're doing is waiting to see the leader back again.
Well, do you want to make the motion?
Well, that's what I was just going to say, so it sounds like there is a general consensus to halt payments, or, unless they suspend, halt, that's very strong, to suspend payments to the airport consultant beginning December 1 until funding is identified, is that okay for language?
That's fine.
Okay.
Or, no, I mean, I want another action of the council before we read the statement. I don't want any, any way of reading the statement without us discussing it.
So, until council action and funding is identified, or let's just say council action. Okay. All right.
We use a joke, council will have three resources.
Correct.
Yeah, and I'd like to point out that this action will in fact create an operational surplus in the airport budget of a very small amount based on rough projections. We're $3,000 down, for the next year will be, you know, 1,600 potentially.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like there is, who wants to make that motion first?
I guess I will.
Motion to halt, to suspend the airport.
Oh, we'll do it one by one. Okay, I, I move that we suspend the monthly payment to airport aviation until the council reads states.
Okay. Is there any, there's a second? I'll look at you two, motioning instead.
Oh, my God, the airport of all things.
I know. Just wanted to point that out. All right, is there any discussion on the motion anymore? Seeing none, we'll move it to both, all those in favor of suspending payments to the airport consultant until council action will signify, say aye. 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 Opposed, abstention, that motion carries. Let's just move, so, I didn't hear any issue with limiting education spending or moving forward with the city park for three months and finding replacement. Are we on the same page with that one as well, and would you like to make a motion?
Well, I just wanted to explain, having been in Dunsborough as long as I have, and Gary Benson's put most of the roots on my buildings in Dunsborough, considering the neighbor and friend, I think with our new city manager and council, we can reach an arrangement that works for everybody, for the city to own that property. I just signed a check for the monthly rent to Gary Benson, it's a silly way to do it. Prior councils wanted Gary to just give the city park to the city, and Gary's not jiggy with that. But I do think that the next three months, if the city manager meets with Gary Benson and presents us with options, we can come up with something part better than the stats quo.
I agree.
All right, would anyone like to make a motion to move forward with limiting education spending to state mandated education and moving forward with payments for the next three months for city park and finding an alternative?
That's a motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion?
Money.
What?
You should be doing that. Roll call, sorry, since you're blocking money.
We're saving money.
Yeah, we're not, we're not spending, let's go. All right, so, all those in favor of moving forward with limiting education spending to state mandated education only and paying out for the next three months while finding an alternative for city park, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention, that motion carries. Okay, we'll now move on to placing a $55,000 cap on the community promotions funding for the next fiscal year. I know, Bruce, you had said that, you're not in favor of doing that at this point.
I still am not, I just don't feel that we need to tie our hands right now and look forward to the size of this when the time comes.
So, I'll hand this to you, gentlemen, as well, and what your, I know what your...
Who are your thoughts?
I'm okay with announcing a cap. To me, $55,000 is an arbitrary number, besides, you know, looking at what we spent this year, which we did spend a lot more this year than we have in previous years. I'm okay with it right now, but I would like to revisit, knowing that, I would like to revisit this opus in the future to make sure that we are able to meet all the projects coming up.
Yeah, and the Finance Committee, you know, is aware of the fact that distribution of funds between us, what wasn't discussed then, it's going to depend on applications, anyone able to apply, we could get very many more applications or fewer, so that'll have to all be decided by council at that time, but just to project that we, we're not leaving the community promotions organizations, we can't afford a lot, so we're going to have to project some cut from this year, but that we're going to project also being there stably around $55,000.
So, I'm in favor of it, it makes sense.
There is a dead item about the promotions funding.
The procedure, yeah.
It's the procedure of disbursements. Okay, it's just, kind of relates, just, cool.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
Yes, I motioned to place a $55,000 cap on community promotions money for the next fiscal year, but by the cap, also intended, we are expecting probably, I don't know, like we do with $55,000.
Is there a second?
Also, I'm in...
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this motion? No, so, all right.
Yeah, I, I am seconding it with an obvious bias toward fully funding community promotions. But, we got handed a fruit wall a couple of weeks ago, when we expected to be able to have increased revenues earlier rather than later from the sales tax increase. It's not going to be March, it's going to be November. But I totally agree with my colleague, Councilmember Village, if we don't have the support of the library, and we don't have the support of all the community groups, nothing will pass whether it's March or November. So, as explained by the Chair of the Finance Committee, the city is tightening its bill. We're going to try to engineer a process that is fair to all grant applicants for the next cycle, whether it's your old days, or the library, or who knows what. But this is a working process, and we're trying to reflect to the nonprofits and the requesters of the community, we're still in transition toward the funding we hope to obtain. So, it's a marker, just like the airport is a marker, and there's a long ways between this November and next November, and I hope to work cooperatively with the community to a good end. Thank you.
I think my big thing with the community promotions funding is I would feel better lifting the cap or even being a little bit more generous in what we're giving each organization next year if it's a match for a grant. So, if, if, community, you know, especially the bigger ticket items, if I, you know, personally, if I'm seeing them making the conscientious effort, like the pool, that's a big infrastructure piece. So, I mean, we're never going to be able to use this funding to fund a big infrastructure piece, but it makes me feel better if they're making the effort, if all of the community organizations are making the effort, and really all they need is six grand as a match, you know, I feel much more inclined to grant that. So, I think that's a big thing, I want to work out with the different organizations and reach out to them about, just see what we can do about, trying to find other revenue sources for them that we could assist with and really more enhance, rather than completely fund all of our, our social services and community practice.
I think that's an excellent sentiment, prioritizing things that are most productive for our new community. But I also like the idea, maybe revisit this sometime in the future, of setting a cap for it. One, staff last year preparing the budget, it was difficult because they kind of just left it out, and then council got to consider it, they just got to hear from us what the, what the number ended up being, but they're trying to financially plan for the city, and it's a big chunk of our, you know, of our budget, so if they have some idea of what we're overall intending to spend, or, not considering the organization itself, but our financial situation, this is what we probably can afford, if we start there, I think that'll get healthy out of the process.
Thank you. Yes.
I could support this if there was some way of adding a little bit of flexibility into the language, so that we're not putting a hard decision on, but we can say our goal or aspiration or goal, or our vision is that it'll be that, because I don't want to, I just would rather have it be flexible so we can reevaluate later without having the heart, but, you know, we may end up just going three-one necessarily.
How about if we amended such, you know, place a cap in preparation of the, as budget, of the 2021, '22 budget?
Yeah, I think it still sounds like we're putting a cap on. My, my understanding of the motion at hand is that it's a firm cap right now, but it doesn't necessarily mean we can't lift it if no one ever goes...
No, I'm just saying that the city council, if they deem appropriate and equitable, can always change. I don't know. So, I think, you know, that reality is there, it's happening.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move it to both, all those in favor of placing a $55,000 cap on the community promotions funding for the next fiscal year, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye, no.
Abstention? Promotion carries. Thank you. Are there any other items up for discussion today that we haven't covered in this recommendation, or are we okay right now? I know we do still want to discuss a lot of these items, I think one of the things that's on the halftime, community services officer, we are staying full-time, correct? Okay, so that's just a clarification, so we don't have to take action on that, it was council sees fit, but seeing as, for tonight...
Best practice.
No, it's not something I would want to do, but if that's the case, that's the case.
Do you want to maybe revisit the procedure to avoid that possibility?
Well, here so the dilemma comes in, in that the original point of coming up with that procedure is ensuring that it's fair and if some folks walk in and they need it at one time, that they're able to get it. And if four different groups come in at the same time saying they need it, who do you put off? And if you're operating at low moments and a negative cash flow, then the money will come in. But it is problematic, and I get where Blake doesn't want to operate from a negative cash flow, but we are certainly going to be able to backfill. But if we want to be fair about it, we're kind of in the position of either you operate from a place, if everybody asks for it at once, that you have to wait in backfill, or you come up with a program that isn't always fair. So it's just a choice.
I would support like quarterly to avoid cash flow issue, but still be predictable. So remove the on request and then move to quarterly installments.
Do you want to set a date for any?
Let's just go off fiscal year.
Yeah, go off fiscal quarters.
First July, October.
Don't want to make this like super complicated that it has to be the third Thursday of the first complete week of the whole year.
You can set that as best.
Yeah.
My last clarification is for the function performed by the Finance Committee. It says we will recommend a plan. As we did this year, do we also recommend grants to individual grant requesters, or is that a one-time show before the City Council? Either way is fine, but it needs to be cleared.
I don't understand that question.
This year, all of the applicants came to the Finance Committee, made their pitch, and the Finance Committee recommended to the full City Council, we recommend this amount for X, Y, and Z. Are we still doing that, or are we no longer doing that?
I believe you are still recommending in this case, but we wouldn't have the list present to City Council after the review. Are you having to present twice?
Present to the Finance Committee and just be available for public comment to the council.
So this should be amended to say the Finance Committee is also going to recommend allocations to applicants.
The Finance Committee wants to decide allocations as well?
Not decided.
Well, recommend.
Recommend allocations as well?
I heard it sounded like that's how.
Basically do it right again this year.
So with more known timeframes?
Yes.
Opens this, closes now, it's going to be dispersed this way?
Yeah. So basically, the first sentence of the City Council portion of your recommendation would be moved to Finance Committee, and it would be a recommendation from Finance Committee for final allocations.
And the way that works this year is if a group received nothing for a cutback, they actually have an appeal to the full council, which I think is right.
Could we just add from the application process and when we do put this on the city website, that when they are applying in February through April, that it is for the next fiscal year? Just to clarify that, so people don't get confused and apply and then don't understand why they don't get their money in, or something like that?
Do we have public comment on this one?
Yeah, no one came up. It's okay. So it sounds like it's going to be a much cleaner process, and there's a little bit more deadlines and information. But I think, yeah, I think the point of contention at last meeting was the dispersment. So it's nice to see that cleared up. And I like the quarterly option. Is there any other discussion or recommendations? Seeing none, can we just assume unanimous approval, or would you like a formal going on this one? If you guys wanted to consensus that time, all right? I think we've very much approved on consensus.
No objection. No objection.
Well, that's right. We're agreeing. Anyway, all right. So there's general consensus to move forward with the procedures as presented. Fully knowing and just for the public's information, it's just an internal procedure, and if there's issues, we can always make adjustments later. But I think this is not the way to getting people more information, getting those applications a little bit more sure of, and people know what's going on. So thank you.
Awesome.
All right. Well, now move on to new business, and our only item for new business tonight is discussion of possible TOT increase.
Can we consider postponing this so we get more input? Because I know Mr. Hark had a good point that if we've got hoteliers out there, and I think you'd want to get them involved in this, maybe in this other area.
Let's move through the items once we get to discussion. I think that's an action that we can take.
Can I just add something to this? I contacted Mark.
You're soft spoken.
I am soft spoken. I called Mark, who's here, and I called Lily Dewey. He's not back until Monday.
A week. Which Mark?
For us.
Mossberry Hotel.
Mossberry Hotel. So I drove three hours to here just for this.
Thank you.
So I'll let you present the staff report.
Perfect.
Knowing that we can take action tonight to go get more information prior to making a final decision.
Cool. So on the staff report there, hopefully you looked at it, but so we did. So I just did a, okay. Preliminary numbers is for last year, roughly 1.5 million in transient occupancy tax revenue. No, transit occupancy revenue. So the revenue that hoteliers, whoever, generated was about one and a half million. So our transient occupancy tax is 10%, so I'm using 10%. The full tax is 12%, which is including the T-bid, which is what we heard from earlier. Okay. So if we were using 1.5 million times 10%, that's about $150,000 of TOT revenue to the city.
How much of that is Airbnb? We talked about that before roughly?
Yeah.
Probably that number in the future.
30% or something like that, yeah. It's good. Yeah, maybe even more. Well, no.
Julia, I remember we had a conversation, didn't we, where that number came over?
Yeah, because more and more properties are going Airbnb.
Was it 18,000 a quarter or a year or a month? What was that?
Around a quarter.
Quarter. So 18,000 a quarter for Airbnb.
I believe that's correct.
That sounds about right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
If this tax can exclusively target one type of lodging.
Correct. So yeah, it's a, yeah, 40%. Okay, so then if we go 11% is the TOT tax, then that's $165,000 as an increase of $15,000. Or if it's a 12% TOT tax, then that's $180,000, roughly a $30,000 increase. That's all I got.
Very good. Any clarifying questions before we open up the public comment? Councilor Hark?
Well, I'm aware that the county is considering raising this tax in the unincorporated areas of Siskiyou County. My question is, where is the county at this point, and what are they proposing as increases? And for the city of Mount Shasta and the city of Wai Rika, what is their equivalent number?
I don't know.
Uh, county's extended looking to go to 12. City of Mount Shasta's extended looking to go to 12. City of Need, I think, is already at 11. And I don't know what Wai Rika is, but when you take a look at lodging, we're probably not competing with them for this region.
Thank you.
Does anyone know the city of Redding? We're probably closer to that.
I think, again, when you look at lodging markets, we're probably not openly competing with Redding for lodging and tourism, because we have a different atmosphere. But it would be interesting to know what a larger city chart is.
Well, because when one travels, you notice that it's a lot more than other charters you have for similar things. So if everyone's kind of used to in their mind it being, oh, 10% charge on, and suddenly, you notice it's there.
Well, yeah.
Well, some places are very high. I think there are places where the total is close to 1%.
There's some guy in the audience that has a lot of wisdom on this.
There you go.
I just got back to a point where it's 18%. So, I mean, obviously a bigger drop.
But anyway, yeah, it'd be interesting to know what Redding brings in, but yeah, again, if you look at the lodging spheres.
If someone's going to stay here instead of Redding, you're right, they just say.
It's curious. Anyway, any other questions before we move into public comment? All right. We'll now move into public comment on this item, and if you'd like to come up. Thank you for driving me.
Sure. I was coming tomorrow at Christmas tree, but I just came a little early. So I'm Mark Rowley from the Mossberry Hotel, but I want you to think of me as a goose, and I lay golden eggs. So with that, I'm going to be a strong proponent to raise the TOT tax. Now, I know others in the industry have a different point of view, but what I've participated in over the years is this 2% increase, most people don't, you know, it's going to go to the traveler, and people say, well, that won't make us competitive. But you've pretty well discussed it here this evening. Going to 12% is probably has become the standard in California, and as you get to more urban situations, it goes from there, even to as high as 18%, plus T-bids and whatnot on top of that. So in big cities, it can actually go over 20%. So I think you're more than within the ballpark. But because I'm a goose that lays a golden egg, and I can help you bring in more revenue to the city, I would like us to see, not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, boy, I've got a lot of metaphors in my head, not throw the baby out with the bathwater. It's going to be absolutely critical, and I'm hoping to make a presentation if the council will allow me, I've prepared a presentation, that will talk specifically about this, not tonight, but I'm ready to go, and I'll probably be on the agenda. We want to, we've got a market, and we've got to do a dramatically better job than we have been doing. And this is going to have to be through a partnership, and this is going to have to be with the city, and what the Chamber can do, and the merchants can do, and the merchants are going to have to do the heaviest lifting, and it's something that we're going to have to get used to. And I've been talking to a lot of merchants, I talk to 14 of them on a regular basis now, and I think they're understanding what it is that we have to do. Because we're not going to cut expenses and get ourselves out of our situation. You have to raise revenue. That is the only way to do it. And so when I'm allowed to make a presentation to the council, it's going to be called, how does Dunsmere get its mojo back? And what we need to do is roll up our sleeves, come up with an action plan that's very achievable. There's no magic here, and we set about doing that, because I'm hoping to show the council and the community that we're riding that knife edge, razor's edge, right now, and with just a little bit of fine tuning, we're a listing ship, but we're not on its side or upside down. And with a few techniques, then we can bring ourselves up, and we can be a healthy competitor in the North State and the Shasta Cascade. And I'm ready to go, I'm ready to help lead. I'm not telling you I have the answers, but I do this with our other properties, it's been very successful, we have to do this, and that's my presentation. I do have one other item here. I want staff to take note. This is called Made in the USA, San Bernardino, California, published November 18th, 2019. This book is literally off the press, it's in its fifth iteration, and I'm going to give it to our city manager. And I have other copies, and if you can take a look at that, pass it around. It's a very practical manual on how to do all of this. This is based primarily off the West Coast. You will notice in there through the pictures and the comments, it's talking about all of us. This isn't a back east or a European model, it's a West Coast model, and a lot of towns our size are adopting that. So with that, thank you.
Really quick, I do have a quick clarifying question, just because you're here. By the way, I won't give extra time for anyone else who would like to come up, because everybody was paying attention to what you have said. So one of the main goals of the T-bid is to advertise the region. I'm just curious, do you feel that that T-bid is enough advertisement, or do you feel that we need more?
I was hoping that the ladies were going to stay, but I see that they needed to get on and get traveling. I've tried to observe it, I have to tell you that I haven't fully digested it yet to see it, but I have to say, and I wish they were here, I don't think it's being effective for us. I really don't. I try to watch everything they do, I get their feeds every Friday, that maybe hopefully some of you do too. And I think we can work with them, I don't see them as an adversary, but I think that we need to claw ourselves to the top. The reason my wife and I are here, besides grandkids, but the primary reason we're here is we feel that this community has so much potential. I read the book that was made from 100 years ago, but tourism was literally over 100 years ago, and this is a world-class place, and we just need to reestablish our position at the top. I think working, I can see us playing two different roles. They're attempting to be a direct marketing organization and market abroad, and I'm thinking that they're being reasonably successful, they're learning their way, I am not negative to what they say, but I think that we need to be more of a regional marketing area. We need to look no further. Would anyone care to take a guess at how many of our travelers and tourists stop here from Oregon? We think it's none. It's somewhere between 23 and 28%. It's a huge market. So between the Rogue Valley, Medford Metro area of about 130,000 to 160,000, and Redding, within an hour and 10 minutes drive both direction, we have a quarter million of people. We don't need to market beyond that scope. But if we go after them, and if we have tourism products, which we just need to nurture and say, here it is, and polish it up, I think we can drive that, and these are proven techniques that we can do even with meager budgets.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mark, thank you. I agree with you.
Yay, Mark.
All right. Again, I gave Mark a little bit more time, we're about at 4 minutes 15 seconds, so if anyone would like to come up, I will give you the additional time as well. We will now move into discussion. I believe there's already kind of a thought that we do need to outreach a little bit more on the TOT increase. I'm very supportive of the 2% increase in TOT. Most of the region is moving into a 2% increase to raise revenue this way. It's one of the older taxes that we have locally that is in place on our own residents. And again, I'll cover it, I think you might be one of the few people who looks at the TOT values, because whenever I travel, it's just that's just what I'm going to pay. The really nice thing about TOT in California, which I learned this just recently, is that state agencies still have to pay the local TOT, which is huge. That means when CalFire was up here last year for the Delta fire, that was one of the things that was a worry in the city of Mount Shasta, is because of the smoke, so many people were canceling, what ended up happening is CalFire took up the ruse and still paid the TOT tax, which was kind of a blessing in disguise for that city. But I think for us, you know, again, becoming more regionally active, I think the other thing too is, you know, working on event spaces for groups that do want to come up here, and getting those, making larger groups to come as package deals. We obviously don't have a conference center or anything that's super fancy, but I think there's an ability to build on those assets and bringing larger groups to be able to pay that for state agencies. I know that Pacific Tower does their regional working groups, where they move around the different regions, and they did it up at the Mount Shasta Resort, and a lot of those people ended up staying here from just, you know, again, surrounding counties and state agencies. So I think that's another thing we can start advertising, is being able to accommodate those.
They have to actually fill out paperwork ahead of time to be qualified to be able to support, help trans people like that.
I have a thought, some stuff I'm hearing this discussion, should we be considering a 3% increase? If the norm is going to be 12, which it is, we're intending to polish up our town and make it the shiny jewel that it is underneath, would we be smart to raise an extra 15,000? It could potentially be, I mean, with our consent here at council, you're marked towards perhaps increasing events within the town that we bring in, in turn more lodging and more customers for our lodging owners.
That's exactly what I was trying to say before about the idea that when we talk about the Chamber, a significant, if not almost all of the money we're talking about in the Community Development Fund is actually to pay for advertising. So what we're talking about is, is that right now, the Chamber is still struggling with membership, et cetera, but even if it were full and all enough, they wouldn't have the money to be able to do the amount of advertising that we've been doing over the last several years, and I'm concerned that we may actually be dropping off because of the change in leadership over there, the executive director, et cetera. But the whole point is, is that if we're looking at economic development, we have to recognize that a significant portion of that is advertising. And I agree with Mark that, you know, we can focus it more on regional, but at the same time, we need to recognize that that was one reason we were getting so many people here, was because there was advertising that was going on.
Councilor Hark?
Well, my only concern is that we hold, I'm Republican, I don't like tax increases. Nonetheless, I vote for them in our community for all the reasons given. We have no choice if we're going to be prosperous, we have to do this. But I do think, again, the treasure's not here, we need forward-looking budgets for the next two fiscal years out. We need to incorporate the assumption that we're going to pass a sales tax increase of 1% next November. And when we actually receive that stream of income on our hopefully prospering economy that we're not trying to kill, I certainly don't favor any increase in the transit occupancy tax until we know it's going to work for everybody. And we've not yet to hear from that segment of the transit housing community in Dunsmere, not everybody is the Mossberry Hotel. So if we tell the community, in exchange for us approving these two tax increases, you get a balanced general fund, and you get law enforcement, and you get a full-time community, I'll do it. But the staff, we have to go from backward-looking in the current fiscal year to looking forward. That's a big value in the Finance Committee.
And we table this with direction given to staff to reach out to all of the local hoteliers, notify them that we'll have it on our next agenda?
Would you like to also increase one or 3%?
I'd like to take that as a serious option as well. Just with the, you know, with the understanding, even with those two increases, law enforcement will be very, very expensive in two and a half years, and we can't cut ours further. I know I say this all the time, but you look at our general fund, fire, and law enforcement is half of it. That's the stuff we can't replace, we can't cut. And we don't actually accurately do our capital replacement. We have tons of old equipment that's 30, 40 years old. We're not calculating the cost to prepare to it. So if we can reasonably do 3%, you know, I view it as kind of sharing the burden among all of us, we're raising the sales tax, or if it's a 10% too, we're raising this, because we live our money's worth, or our city's worth spending money on and preserving.
So instead of this, would you entertain a motion to prepare information on a TOT increase, including a possible 3% increase for the next meeting, and then advertise and reach out to all of the lodging owners as well?
That policy, that is my motion.
Within reach, reasoning, because obviously we can't get every vacation.
I have one thing to the direction. We also have something on whether we receive such funds, because that would be a rough financial issue as well.
And also maybe talk to John Kennedy, and we should actually do it.
We like these 3 and 40 motions, don't we?
It's fine. We'll get Julie the information. So it's basically a motion to prepare information on a TOT increase, including a possible 3%, what a 3% would look like, when we would receive those funds in the budget if it passed. And then for staff to also reach out to hotel lodging individuals and invite them to the next meeting.
I still move.
All right, cool. And there's a second, any discussion on the end of the panel? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of moving to prepare information on TOT increase as previously discussed, so Mark can go through the whole thing again. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent? What motion figure? You're seeing me?
No, no, no.
Oh, you're aye.
I voted aye, but it's probably part of the package, you can't be in the abstract. The golden goose, if you heard the golden goose part, that's the most important part.
Well, maybe, you know, we should revisit finance department of sales tax as part of the discussion at least, and then we have direction to move forward on it, but I'm just saying, we need to be proactive given them having here.
Okay. So that would mean that we're placing TOT increase on the next agenda as well as old business, but you would like to revisit the TOT. Would you like Finance Committee to revisit TOT again before coming back to council?
I think council's already considered, placed it on the ballot, but maybe just a discussion of what the road forward looks like. I know there's an alternative option if the citizens' group emerges, perhaps to dedicate tax, but in the absence of that actually being in place, I think we need to all go on the same page that we've committed to putting that before the people. It's not just kind of sleeping until next, you know, summer, or remembering, I guess. That's all.
Could the, since we're going to be meeting on December 19th, and there's a little bit more time, could I request that staff prepare a report for us that will be presented during the staff member comments, but to have something typed up ahead of time about next steps in the TOT process? And then that way, we would be able to have that, it's up in the public for them to read ahead of time, and then it's also presented at the same meeting that we're discussing the TOT.
Yeah, but in fairness, we're looking at all the options together.
Correct.
We don't have the city attorney, but what we were told in finances, the city council can actually approve a tax increment. Is that our understanding?
For TOT.
For TOT, yes.
I would just definitely double check on what the limit of it is, because I do believe that there is a VOE limit to how much we can raise each time.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, cool.
Let's not make that a speaking.
So we're kind of, we're done with new business, and we're bleeding into future agenda items. I just wanted to make sure we covered those two important items, since they were talked about the most, but I'm going to hand it over to Councilor Hark, you have requested future agenda on, and I assume because you have it, but hold up items.
I do.
The other thing is, is I believe you are up for pre-agenda next week, so that might be another opportunity to bring that list up.
Well, in terms of political causes, I think we are at that time of the year when we select a new mayor and vice mayor.
We are, we have discussed that for at least next meeting.
That's one item. The city manager reported on the building inspection ordinance, which is going to the planning commission first. Will that be this month?
December.
I have December, thank you. I think it's of extreme importance now that we pass the solid ways, or excuse me, the vegetation management ordinance that we huddled with the representatives of Clemens, our waste hauler. And I'm mindful of a very great unhappiness by some members of your city, Madam Mayor, with the change. But between our solid waste budget and the general fund, and this ordinance pushing everybody to clean up their vegetation, do we want more free days? Hugely successful this year. Do we want the city public work staff to help? Do we want the... Do we want the...
So instead of getting into a big discussion about it, I know it is an item that we've had on the future agenda to meet with them and discuss. One of the reasons we've been waiting a little bit is to see how franchising goes with Mount Shasta. They'll be finishing their stuff up in December, so we'll have some information based off of what they're doing. So we're not reinventing the wheel. But yeah, we should be meeting in the next month.
Process-wise, is the lead the staff?
Right now it's staff, but I believe there was a question about maybe there might be an ad hoc of two council members working with staff on this, but I don't think anything's been decided yet, or brought to council.
I think it's critical that we include our citizen volunteers on the Disaster Recovery Committee that have done a fine job for us. We need to have this discussion well in advance of negotiating a new contract with Clemens and putting in our budget on the next artificial.
So, so yeah, so again, we're getting a little bit more into discussion about it, any other items?
Last but not least is a letter that I kept that was sent by Governor Mayor Vice Craig to the Union Pacific Company. I do, in my world, think that parking will be an issue for the city of Dunsmere next year. And I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you ever got a response from the Union Pacific or relative company?
I've got some news on that.
Well, it's all good, but I would like to hear it from Union Pacific. Will they cooperate with us on parking issues? Will they cooperate with us on Mossbury Trails? There are even more booms in this Sacramento River right by my house. They are supposed to be partners with the city and I think it's well beyond time they have a dialogue with Representative Union Pacific.
So the news that I've had is from Sheriff Lopey.
So again, we haven't had staff member comment or just on future agenda, is it quick?
Yeah, I just want to say that Sheriff Lopey said he reached out with a letter to UP and he got a very positive response back saying they want to start playing with us.
There's other stuff too, so we can talk about that later. We've asked public council member comment. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move into adjournment, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention?
Mark, what were you?